All right, folks, out in the hallway, you want to come in and join us? Ladies, gentlemen, and you, J.D. Come on, John. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April 9th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I would ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Some housekeeping. There are openings on the following committees: the Audit Committee, the Business Development Commission, Carver Cultural Council, Carver Housing Authority (we need a state representative), Commission on Disability, Earth Removal Committee, Growers Representative, Finance Committee, Local Housing Partnership Committee, Marcus Atwood Trustees, Old Colony Regional Votech School Committee, two positions there, Recreation Committee, two positions there, Town Building Study Committee, and ZBA alternate. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for an application. Also, our ongoing reminder that donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. Just because the holidays are over, that doesn't mean that the need has gone away. So, please be as generous as you can. Thank you very much. Our first item on the agenda tonight was approval for acceptance of a FEMA Fire Department Fire Assistance Grant and vote to authorize expenditure of $5,798 from the matching grant fund warrant article. However, the deputy and his assistant could not be here tonight due to another commitment, so we're going to ask you to be patient with us, and we're going to table this till the next meeting when they can show up and...
Want me to make a motion?
Please, if you would.
Motion to table?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, suggestions, comments, recommendations? Harry, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Genuinely. Okay, at this time, we're going to have an update from Mr. Gary Garretson, Chairman of the Earth Removal Committee, to discuss the hiring of a structural engineer to assess damages potentially caused by the Purchase Street solar project. Thank you for joining us tonight, Gary.
Yep, that's good. The Earth Removal Committee, and you have in front of you some minutes that I had done up on a report from the Earth Removal Committee site visit on Saturday, April 6, 9:00 a.m., as agreed upon. We met the, myself, John Shirtlift, Bob Aronimo, and Jim Nowell, and all members of the Earth Removal Committee, met at 9:00 on Saturday morning, April 6, at the Earth Removal Site off Purchase Street that we had the discussion about last Thursday. At that meeting, there were, some issues were raised that we needed to be addressed by the committee and by the applicant. The truck traffic on the site was the first issue to be addressed with the rerouting of trucks to the pond side of the bog. When we were there, blocks were placed by a worker essentially to render the road on the housing development side of the bog inoperable, and essentially, that road cannot be used by the haul trucks in exiting. And there was a question of whether that was necessary or not. It was easier for the truck drivers to do a site, and they would make a circular pattern there, and they would go around. This brought them in closer proximity to the houses, and we felt that they, with some reorientation of some of the site piles that were there, that they would be able to modify this and have the truck do a circular turn at the end, and then be able to haul the material out on the same entrance road that they used. The truck drivers don't necessarily like it, but, not speaking disparagingly of trucks, but they always want to go straight, and then this would require them to go around and back up and turn around a little bit. So, they agreed to that, and actually, that road was blocked off when we were there. I went up, as off of the minutes, and I had gone up there, our intention was to have the road blocked through from the development, the cut-through road, or essentially, that road that was having access and egress into the development, and there was a right-of-way or a road that went through by the houses on that side. And our intention was to have that blocked off. That was not done, and I spoke with Mr. Logan this afternoon in anticipation of coming, expecting it to be done now, and it will be done in the morning, tomorrow morning. So, that road will also be addressed, and there won't be an access and egress. So, that's essentially going to block the road access off on both sides, and entrance and exit from, on, by Leland Way through, cut through, and the road that cuts through to the bog side, and the exit road that's there. So, that road will effectively be blocked off also. That should address some of the issues with the large trucks that were there, and essentially, I was sympathetic with the lady who needed to park her car sideways to block the Lopes trucks that were carrying material out of there, and there's no need for any of that. The road, and dust remediation was also discussed, though when we arrived there Saturday morning, the road was wet, but we also talked about other opportunities for dust remediation on the site. And there were some commercial materials that are available, and these are readily available. Mr. Logan said that they had some on some of the other dusty. Most of these guys will have some of this material available, a calcium chloride derivative, and it will wind up absorbing moisture out of the air, so it doesn't need to be wet all the time, and this is spread on the roadway, and it absorbs it and keeps the road moist so that there won't be great piles of dust coming out. They had some, and they would be using it on this site. I'm, we're cautious about using some of this around water supplies, because it's not the best thing to be using, and, but it is one of the commercial materials that is available there, and in using this with not too much water. But, this hadn't been a dusty, wide-open acres of sand site, but if it's still kicking up dust, we want to make sure that we address it, and that was what we did. Mr. Logan gave us some progress on the bog site, that there's still a hollow where the bog is going to be going. Towards the development side, there was some organic material that was there with the side slopes. We talked with him about addressing the finished side slopes on the pond side and on the other side. In other words, doing a circular all the way around the bog. To that end, he said that some of the bog still needed to be expanded. They're using the site area, when the pond is drained down, they still have some work to do at the back end of the pond, and the, I guess I'd say, the back end of the second pond as you enter. And there's still some sloping and some material that needs to come out. We needed to address the motor and the muffler that was there, that was running all the time with a noisy muffler. The oil pump had been repaired, and that will essentially be used to drain down the pump, and we talked about working hours. It can only, when it's up on the banking, be used during their normal work hours, but when it actually gets down inside the hole, it could go 24 hours a day, and essentially, then the noise attenuation is minor, and there wasn't an issue until the pump needed to be up on top of the hill. And, there was also, of course, that gets everybody's attention when they're running it without a muffler, so, the separate, the secondary pump that was there was the one that, it was just untenable noisiness. Back to the bog. The bog is still anticipated to be having the sand material spread by June, and that there'll be, is, if the, everything stays on schedule, the back pond gets excavated, the finish of the material at the back end, the pond would then be drained down, they'd then move up to the front pond after they moved the irrigation house. There's going to be minimal work over most of the summer there, because, once the back pond gets done, because it's going to have some material that's going to be coming out, but they need to potentially finish the bog up, and there's not a large work area that's there. They have six or seven piles of material that's around there. This was always being fed by the pond excavation. The pond is flooded right now, the pond would be drained down, finished, and then the front pond would be the one that would be excavated. But, that needs to be reconfigured with a sprinkler pump that would feed the irrigation to the bogs, that would need to be moved to the back pond, and there would be a lot of other work that would be going on there that wasn't essentially to enhance the Cranberry Bog operation that's going to be there. So, there'll be less, I'd say, earth removal work in the next three or four months, as, two to three months, up to June and July, until they wind up getting the front pond area done. That brought us up to the, how they were going to stage and work the front pond area, and so we queried them about that. There was some, essentially, a discussion about moving the site, where they would access and egress to the site might be more out towards the front of the operation, and we aren't, they need to think about it, and we'll look to having a discussion with him about how that, where they're going to site the excavation and the digging of the material out in the front area. There was also discussion about an engineer, and the committee had a discussion about, I have two inquiries right now with a company, one of them Leland Farland in New Bedford that has four or five offices. I have an acquaintance that knows him well, that had worked with, he works with the University of Massachusetts Engineering Department in Dartmouth, he's an advisor to the school, and is a respected engineer. He's, I asked him to give me some names, they don't do structural engineering. There was some discussion amongst the committee members that met at the site. We didn't have a full committee, this was not a meeting, this was a site visit, about the appropriateness of us having the funds to be able to do this. Our bylaw and our transfer in the, that the town gave us, was to transfer the funds that we collect to the DPW, and that's the scope. We can't use this to go buy and escalate, to do site visits or something with, so we need to be making sure that we're using the money appropriately. There was also the discussion of, in the appropriateness of having a structural engineer come out and take a look at this. This is something I would defer to the Selectmen. I'm going to be getting some prices, and we need to follow up on this because of my comment to Mr. Toblosky that we would be doing some of this. I think we need to decide that this is of necessity, that the community needs to assume the burden of having a structural engineer that would be hiring this. If there is some question about, and conclusively, that the community or the excavation that we approved is at fault, then we, obviously, we need to be doing this. But, right now, in showing the photographs that Mr. Toblosky had taken to an engineer, he said, gee, this could be, could be this, could be that, and, not taking anything away from Mr. Toblosky, but this sounds like we're going to be trying to prove, and, how far it is to infinity in some respects, so, it's, I wish it would be more clear-cut, and I could come and say that we could get somebody that would be able to give us a definitive answer, and this is how much it would cost. So, I, we'll get some structural engineers, and we can do an estimate, and I'd like an opinion upon, from some of these guys about the, in doing this. I would assume that Mr. Toblosky would be doing something, I won't speak for him, but would be doing something else, something like this also. I also, though, received an email from Mr. Toblosky about, this morning, at, just after 4:00, he had a truck drive in, and said, the earth removal is, the site being open, you're, you wind up having everybody see a road and taking a ride, and so, it's disturbing. And, at 4:15, having lights in there. It wasn't a remove, a truck removal, and they weren't loading trucks or anything there, but it's still an issue having an open road. To that end, after I had received the email from Mr. Toblosky this morning, I spoke with Mr. Logan this afternoon, and I said, what about restricting access? In other words, a fence or a gate that would be appropriate? And then you control who's in the site, there's no question about opening and closing this. And, he said, I would get together with him tomorrow, and I think it's something that we could work out, that there would be then restricted access to the site so that there aren't trucks wandering around in there 24 hours a day, up in there. With all of the publicity that the solar side of the operation has up in there, you're having lots of people just driving around looking at how, what's going on, so, I think it might enhance the, and provide security to valuable equipment and everything that's up in there, so, I think it would, that might make sense. But, respectfully, that's the discussion that we've had since I last left you on Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself?
Go ahead.
My, my son's property is in a butter to that property.
Okay. I was just going to add that if you can come up with the name of the engineers, I'll work with the town administrator, and we'll see what we can do, taking it from there.
The, when I spoke on Thursday, I did reference that we should have an engineer. This is something that the committee members said to me, hey, really, our bylaw, that was my era, in speaking that way. We aren't, we aren't essentially able to just take funds out of the account...
Right, you're not set up for that, I understand.
...that is dedicated to DPW.
All your monies, all your monies are automatically moved to the DPW, so I understand that.
Okay, but, thank you very much.
I brought some questions from the board. Anybody from the board have any, anything they want to ask Mr. Garretson while he's here?
I'm pretty pleased with all the work that you've done and gone ahead and investigated. I think you were pretty thorough with what you explained out here. I have a lot of confidence in your board, I've worked with you before, so...
Yeah, well, thank you, Jack, but this is, we, we take this seriously, and it's not a lark to us, nor are we in Cranberry's pocket or anybody else's pocket. It's our, our intention is to make certain that the town has projects that wind up coming to fruition, that wind up being in the good intent of what's in the best interest of all the townspeople. It's not just in, but, oftentimes, in the interests of having everybody have a benefit from additional Cranberry bogs or a site that's going to be changed in some way. Oftentimes, there are neighbors that are right next door, that you, we clearly lean more towards the butters and what's going on next door, if a person isn't going to stand right up and respond. For all of Mr. Logan's issues that we've had with some of this, he's been pretty responsive to us, and I'll have to say that, I'm not saying that this is, it's a layup, but he's, he understands that we do this with good intent, but also with firm intent, that it's going to get to be done.
Just as an aside, you're talking about a truck up there wandering around, off the road, around the bogs. I don't know if a lot of people are aware or not, but there's some massive thefts going on of sprinkler heads from a lot of the growers, so, if you happen to see people that are out somewhere where they don't belong, by all means, call the police and...
In South Carver, Friday night, we had reported, I reported, in fact, 14 acres of a neighbor's farm that was isolated, that he had $6,000 worth of sprinkler heads, and with the independent price of Cranberries right now, that's going to be a difficult...
Hit to take, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be difficult. To that end also, though, the Grow Association instituted a bill for the junk operators that will be more difficult to dispose of. When a guy comes in with sprinkler heads that are $25 to $30 apiece, and he has 400 of these, that, and he's going to be paid four bucks apiece or something for these things, you know that it's going on, and...
Sure.
Unfortunately, the dealings with some of these guys, he'll, they'll pull out a roll of cash, and there's no paper trail.
There's no trail, that's right, and some of them are less than reputable, and it's not just the sprinkler heads, it's motors from pump houses right on down the line, batteries. So, just for the benefit of everybody out there, I think we need to, to watch each other's backs, the citizens that live around the bogs, and, and in turn, Mr. Garretson and his committee is trying to make sure that everybody's able to coexist here, so...
We will address the access and egress tomorrow morning, and I'll do that just to make sure and check on the other entrance and exit from Leland Way in the development, to make sure that both, the right-of-way is shut down, along with that, the other bog-side road is done, and that's gone. That's not going to be used by the truck traffic, but I will go up there and meet with Mr. Logan in the afternoon, make sure that that other exit is shut down also.
Please extend our thanks to Mr. Logan for his cooperation, and see if we can't get the project done, and keep everybody happy and comfortable.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, may I address Mr. Garretson?
Oh, absolutely, I didn't think you had any questions, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I was waiting for you all to be finished. I just kind of wanted to concur with Jack, I really appreciate your responsiveness to this, and your committee's responsiveness, and I know you've done that with other projects as well. I mean, you're, as soon as you hear something's off, you're right on, on top of it, so, we all appreciate that.
It's been, to be honest, Elaine reporting to me immediately, and if we can arrive at a conclusion pretty quickly, it's always the best. If we don't respond to something, then somebody is only going to wind up, if, if I don't get a response quickly, you need to have a instant response. I'm fortunate in that I live in the town, I've lived here, and I intend to be a citizen of the community for a long time, so I essentially don't, I take my obligation seriously, so, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is something that gives me a great pleasure in recognizing, and that's Alexandra Pimentel, who turned 100 years old on March 3. God bless her. Should we all live that long, you know? So, shout out to Alexandra, Alexandra. We hope to celebrate many, many more of your birthdays, so, God bless. Next up is the Town Building Study Committee, a review of plans and documents from various boards and committees. And we have Mr. Dan Ryan and Mr. Roger Shores representing the committee. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I would like to plan to come before the board in two weeks from now, just to give you a report from the committee, and, you know, discuss items, I'll send some agenda items into you for two weeks from now. But, as you know, we, we reorganized, and we've gotten together and got going as a committee, and we've been starting to collect and evaluate the information, looking at what's changed from two years ago when we were looking at this, this item before. We've been doing some evaluation on, you know, what's the same, what's different, what, what mechanisms are available to us for funding, and picking up pretty much on the same work that we did before, and then starting to update the information to be more relevant. So, part of that, again, we're looking at financials, and we're trying to get a, you know, some information on future projections, so that we can put together another financial strategy to the Board of Selectmen and, and present that to you. And, given that we're an advisory board to, advisory committee to the board, we like to put a request to the board to obtain information that we can use for, for studying. I think we feel that we're just an ad hoc committee, so probably it has to officially come from the Board of Selectmen when we request documents to review and such. And, for example, one of the documents that we've created, I mean, we've come across is the Fiscal 2013 Community Development Strategy. I'm assuming you probably have that. We were able to get it off, you know, Public Information, and that document references a lot of good work that's going on, and I think that part of our evaluation, we should get connected up to that and look at it. For example, it references that there's a 2013 master plan draft that's in the works. Be good for us to know what, what's in that and how that is coming together. I'm assuming it includes infrastructure and buildings and such, and talks about the same things that we're looking at, too. In addition, there was a 2009 master plan survey that was done. We'd like to take a look at the raw data that came in. Sometimes, the information that gets summarized is, you know, a little bit different than looking at some of the raw comments that came in from the town. Also, there was a North Carver, South Carver land use document that's referenced in here, too, Land Use and Infrastructure Study. Those all seem like they would be good for us to, to take a look at, too, as we do our, our planning. So, in general, we've, I've got a couple, a number of documents, including the master plan draft, the master plan survey raw data. The, I'd like to take a look at the elementary school survey that was done, the raw data, not the roll-up that was put together for some of the comments that came in towards the elementary school. I mentioned the North Carver, South Carver land use. I'd like to also get the Gateway Health Group 2006 to 2012 financial information, as well as the FY 2012 financial statements from the town that aren't posted yet on the website. All the years are there, except they haven't put the 2012 up yet.
Still in draft form.
Right, and if we could get a draft, whatever, that's available to start to look at...
Well, the draft's been revised, we met with the auditor this morning, so...
Okay, good.
It's been revised, and when we get the revised one back, so...
Great, great, so that'll help us a lot, too. So, I think we've, as a committee, we found that it, it's more valuable to look at multiple years of information, to look for the trends and events, and also use that to look for opportunities to save money for the town. So, we plan to look at trends in population, trends in financial information, things like that, and that should help us probably put together a strategy document that we can then present back to the board. And, as you know, it's, having been here before, it's a significant challenge for the town to find the funding for doing maintenance, replacement, renovation of the municipal buildings, so we feel that we need to look at all the options available and present them back to you as a board, which includes both the future plans that are going on, plus the past history, that we can, we can present to you and show you trends and things like that. So, that's what we plan to do, is analyze, you know, our, we have members on the committee that like to do a lot of analysis, and put that together in our write-up that we present back to you for a report, so I need a request with the board to start to collect up some of the documentation that we need to review.
Dan, you know, I think, I already addressed this with Roger when he came in front of us, because Roger, you know, said, you know, hey, how can we do this job if we don't have access to everything? And I put, I think we pretty much assured him that night. However, if it takes a formal vote of the board tonight, we can certainly do that, to reinforce that, but...
Are you asking us to gather the information?
No, he's asking us to...
Have access to...
Allow them access to whatever they need to do, and...
I think we already said that he could, yeah. Maybe you should leave a copy of that request with us, and then, that way, we don't want to miss something.
Send that in, sure. Yeah, exactly, they're in our minutes, so I can make a copy of the minutes.
Roger, does that sound right?
Yeah, and a lot of people may question why we need five or six years, if not more, of data. We need that so that we could extrapolate properly into the future.
Yeah.
Do you, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Dan and Roger, have you asked for any of these and not received them yet?
Yes, and then there's some information, too, where we're not even sure where it is, but if we're going to generate a letter to different, see, I was thinking, if we generate a letter to different boards and committees requesting information, it might be good if it was through a formal vote of the Selectmen supporting to collect this information.
Yeah, I'll make a formal vote.
That way, it's not just an ad hoc committee, and then people saying, yeah, yeah, we'll get to you in a year or two from now.
We don't want to waste your time, we don't want to waste our time.
Yeah, it sounds like Dan's being very nice, because you have asked, so I'll make a formal motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
True.
I think where it's different departments, that would, we definitely need to do this motion.
Yeah, it will be consolidated.
Because if we just had to, you were just dealing with our office, maybe it could go with... go with an informal.
Right, right.
But where we're doing all the departments, that's good.
Yes, Dan, would you prefer to run all this through our town administrator and have him? You know where a lot of these documents originate, or what departments are in, or you just, uh...
We're, we're determining that as we go, so when we look at different things, we do know who we should, which document we should probably.
It'd be easy, just funnel everything through the town.
They can certainly work with, with Rick.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of stuff going on right now, too, so, we don't want to limit them or hamper them in there.
You don't want to overburden them.
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
Dan and Roger, is there one particular set of documents that would be more important first, in terms of if they have to prioritize which info to get to you first?
We probably have identified about twenty or thirty documents, believe it or not, that we're collecting. Some of it you can find on websites.
Yeah.
But the ones I just listed off.
You really need.
Were probably the ones we'd like to start with.
Okay.
Well, we have a formal motion, and we have a second, and it looks like, uh, we have the board unified and, uh, positioned to, to support you guys in your quest to get, gather the information, so. Are there any other questions, members of the board?
I just want to make a comment. I, as treasurer, I do a continuing disclosure for all the bonding companies, and it brings in a lot of, and I actually use my financial advisor. Brings a lot of information in from the census, so, and I have that in electronic form. If you give me an email, I'll forward it to you.
Okay. I agree.
Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. You guys are formally directed now to go out there and obtain all the information and documents you need, and please come back with a plan that we can sell to the entire town and start moving forward with this capital building program.
Okay, you're welcome, and part of this, I think, is you have to work with all the different departments, and that's why we need to do this, so we can sit down with them and get everybody on the same page.
And you want us to schedule you for two weeks, or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, please. I'll leave this list with Elaine.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Keep up the good work, guys. So.
Keep plugging.
Yeah. Next up was the proposed salary increases for fiscal year 2014 for the following DPW Superintendent, Director of Assessing, Assistant Library Director, and full-time elected officials. And I was approached and asked to put this off until the first meeting in May. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion, we table this until the first meeting in May.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Oh, any further questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I abstain, because I'm an elected official.
Am I an elected official?
A full-time elected official.
I'm just teasing you, Jack. With your sense of humor. All right, we have, um, four, zero, one. Okay. Moving on, acceptance of gift of land map twenty-nine lot seven A R O. Samantha Lane, now a formerly of New England Architectural Builders and Remodelers, Inc., has voted on at the Twenty Twelve Annual Town Meeting. This is just a formal acceptance.
Make a motion, we approve. Accept.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. And everybody knows where Samantha Lane is, right? I don't, I didn't think so. It's off of Pleasant Street, and I think most of it is in Carver, but part of it is in Plumpton.
It's just a little strip of land that runs along in the DPW Superintendent said he could use that.
Right.
It's been kicking around for a long time. Buzz Artianno's donating it to us, so, only generates a tax of like five bucks a year or something, so.
Okay.
I went out and checked it out today. Looks easy to me.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next up is Saint John the Baptist Club request for a one-day special license for April twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Saint John's Baptist Club request for a one-day special license.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Elaine, do we know what it's for? I didn't, uh...
It's for my, uh, party after the election. Win, lose, or draw, we have a party up there.
What, what day?
Twenty-seventh.
Okay.
April twenty-seventh.
All right.
So I'm going to abstain. When do you take your vote?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? And one recusal, one abstention. Very good. Request for use of Samson's Pond by Eastside Sport Fishing Club for May fifth, twenty thirteen, from five AM to eleven AM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know if anybody saw the pictures of those big bass in the newspaper last time they were being, they caught some big fish down there, didn't they? These are pretty standard, usually it's the same clubs every year that come out there, and they know how to take care of the site and, and the pond and stuff, and they don't abuse it, so. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Elaine. Um, policy change for citizens' participation, and, um, this is pretty generic, I know. Helen, this is your thing, so.
Yeah, I had asked for it to be put on the agenda, uh, because, I'll, I'll explain to you why I wanted it to be put on the agenda, and then you can decide whether we should table it to the next meeting. The citizens' participation, we originally made a policy that, um, we wanted to open the meetings up to the public again, because it's your meeting, uh, but we wanted to start it off slowly, um, and just allow for discussion on topics for that particular evening, that a citizen could come up and talk about that specific, um, agenda item, or agenda items. Over the past several months, I've noticed that residents have come up and have wanted to discuss things that weren't on the agenda, and we feel very badly, and it's unfair, that they have to wait till the following meeting to do this. I had wanted to make a policy change that I think everybody's been handling the citizens' participation very well, there's been no discourse whatsoever, and I think we should allow it to evolve. I did talk to Hannah Rush at the Attorney General's Office, and she said, "We were being extremely conservative," uh, she didn't say those words, I am saying it in my own words, "that it is a good best practice that we did that, but we do not have to allow the citizens just to talk about the specific items, because it's an unforeseen discussion, in that we are totally okay to allow people to talk, that it's always up to the chairman, chairman's discretion."
Okay.
Um, so I don't think we have a problem changing this policy, um, to allow for, um, whatever topic a, a resident wants to talk about. However, if you feel more comfortable waiting till the next meeting to make this vote...
I think we should spell it out a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, because it, I feel like the public, and you may not have had this until just the last minute, but the public kinda needs to know what you just told us now, because we didn't know it before, so.
I like that, though. I like that, it's less restrictive.
And I'd like to see it in writing, too.
Yep, I agree.
Well, you can call Hannah Rush at the Attorney General's Office and ask her...
I kinda thought you'd put it in writing for us.
Uh, you can talk to Hannah Rush. I spoke with her on Friday, April fifth, at approximately three forty PM.
Okay.
That's exactly what she said.
No, but, yeah, but that's fine, but I think Mike has a point, that, you know...
Oh, no, I agree to table, to make the decision to make the policy change.
I don't think anybody has any objection to this, I, I, I hope not, because, I, to be honest with you, I think it makes our job a lot easier. Because instead of pushing stuff off for another two weeks, there might be some timeliness issues involved, or, or some other things, so.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it follows open meeting law, that's...
Exactly, and that's what Hannah had explained. She said, "The open meeting law is more for the public officials to the residents, that, you know, it, we don't want to be talking about things that weren't on the agenda, but a resident has a right to just, you know, because it's not..."
If it's okay with the chair.
Correct. Through the, exactly, the chair's discretion.
And I think we also have to be careful that if and when that change is adopted, we don't discuss what citizens have said and vote on them if it isn't something on the agenda.
Right, that's the only, the only thing we need to be careful of, is we don't...
The public needs to know.
From our end, not to make any votes, et cetera. Exactly.
I can check, go ahead. I was, when, when we, I went through, uh, minutes for tonight to be accepted, um, there was a citizen participation that, um, kinda quizzed you, Helen, and, um, and Mr. LaFon said, uh, "With all due respect, citizen participation is not the time to quiz Selectmen." But I remember last week, or the week before, we had some things come up that we had to expand on what you might not want to allow if you were following the, uh, open meeting laws to the succinctly, so, um...
I think in that instance, I think that was, had something to do with, uh, a lack of respect.
Yeah, yeah.
Towards the board.
And that would have to be the chairman's job to...
And I think we can call that, and we can pull the plug on those things that crop up like that.
I thought the citizens' participation related to things that went on during a meeting.
Well, that's the policy we set.
Right.
For them to just stand up here, but if they made an appointment with us, then they could discuss what they wanted to.
But, you know, they have busy schedules, too, Jack, so, I mean, I think if we can build some flexibility in, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
So, you know, we just can't take votes, like Sarah said, that's all we, we have to put it off for two weeks of a special meeting.
You just have to be careful, the discussion doesn't get too deep.
Yep. But I like that. Somebody want to make a motion on that? We'll table it till the next...
So moved.
And, and we're going to define it a little better.
Right.
Yep.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous, Elaine, and, uh, thank you, Helen, I think that's a good, uh, good thing. Approval of minutes, February twelfth and February twenty-six, twenty thirteen. Has everybody had an opportunity to, uh, view these?
Uh, great, I haven't.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have reviewed, um, the minutes of February twelfth, but I don't see the update. I sent it today, so you may not have had.
Did you see that everyone voting and change? Because I did not have a chance.
Do we cooperate?
Oh, okay, so it's in there, but this is just the old one?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at them either.
Okay, um, that, that's fine. We're not too far behind the power curve here anyways. Would you prefer to table these until the next meeting?
I, I would.
Okay.
Both sets or just, just the twelfth?
Yep, I haven't had a chance to look at them.
Okay.
No, I believe that she changed it, so I would be okay approving them.
Yeah, yeah, nobody's questioning that, I mean, but Sarah has not a chance to view it, so why don't we just table these? Can I get a motion, table both sets?
I did. I just made it.
And then a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. God, making my job easy tonight, huh?
Yeah, what, something's wrong.
Why don't you go home and get some sleep before work? Okay. Citizens' participation. Everybody leap up at once? All right, James, I knew somebody was going to get up.
James O'Brien, Four Grade Meadow Drive. And I'll be brief, and, uh, I'd like to just mention two things. One of them is on the agenda tonight, and as a citizen who ran into an issue where time was an important factor in what happened, I appreciate the movement that you're making in this, to allow citizens to be able to come and speak to you that way more openly. Because I think, really, that's what the whole premise of a, of a meeting like this is about. I mean, sometimes, time and, and events are issues where we don't have the opportunity to wait two weeks to put this in, and, and I really do appreciate that, and, and the other reason I was up was I would like to thank you formally for what you've done in, in moving forward as a town, and, and helping our neighborhood in what's going on. And, you know, I say our neighborhood, but again, it really is this town as a whole. And, and there's a lot of people who are sleeping a lot better right now, anyway, for your actions and for what you've done, and I would really formally like to thank you for that. Um, I would like to make a request, whether it's addressed at the next meeting or not, that this is not an issue that we allow to go to sleep again, and that we make sure that the public stays aware of what's going on. Um, I know there are some people here tonight that are, you know, inquisitive and, and were wondering if there was anything on the meeting about that tonight, because they saw the issues with the earth removal. And I think just clarity to keep the public aware of where this process is going is an important thing right now. Um, you know, it, right now, we're waiting on, uh, an appeal from Borrego to go to the ZBA, and, and once that ZBA meeting is set, then that will be the next situation where the public can really be involved and, and be a part of that process. Uh, beyond that, it moves into legal, and there's a lot of restrictions. And I would just request that this committee keeps that forum open, so that the, the general public is really aware of that timeframe, and is able to be a part of that process that's going on, because, you're right, uh, it was mentioned when Mr. Garrison was up here, our street is, has a lot of traffic on it right now, and it's inquisitive traffic, trying to see exactly what's happened, and, and the response that we've gotten from everybody is how awful they feel about what's going on. And, and I just don't want to see that slip away through time, because it's not, people aren't really aware of the timeframes and what's happening with that. So, I just would like to make a request that you do your part to really keep the public aware of that process, and aware of how that process is going, since it is now in your hands as a town, to move that forward.
Well, you know, this has been an educational process for us, too, because as the Board of Selectmen, the town fathers, and sisters and brothers and mothers, make sure I cover all bases here, be politically correct, um, you know, we have ultimate responsibility, but we don't necessarily get involved in all the specifics of the various boards and stuff like that, so sometimes, we're behind the power curve, and I think we were a little bit on this one, too, but what impacts you, impacts us, and impacts every citizen in this town, so, um, you know, let's hope that we can get this thing worked out to everybody's satisfaction, and, uh, I don't think you're going to find us asleep at the helm if this issue should surface somewhere else in the future going forward. The other thing I would like to tell everybody is that, uh, the agenda is opposed, is posted online, and, you know, we've gotten better at being more specific as what is going to And, you know, we've gotten better at being more specific as what is gonna be taking place and discussed. So I think that if you are able to, you can go online and look at that agenda, and if you see solar or something like that, something that, you know, strikes your interest, um, you'll know what's gonna be discussed. Although we like to see as much of a turnout as we possibly can get at every meeting, because it, it just makes it, you know, it's your government, your town. So it's in your interest to come out here and tell us how you want us to represent you, what you want us to do. So we like to see as many people as possible at all the meetings.
So, James, are you looking for us to have like an open agenda item every meeting until we get closer to a resolution on this?
Well, I, I mean, ideally, I think that would be the best case, really, because it offers that opportunity for anybody that might know something, or that might be where. I know when it becomes legal, there are limitations in what can happen with that, but as it stands right now, there are a lot of people that are really wanting to know as much information as they can to find out what's going on, and I think that offers a good opportunity and a good window for people to be able to do that, if, if...
And it will keep people coming to our meeting and keeping us informed, because a lot of times...
Exactly.
We're not informed.
Right.
But you also want something of substance. You don't wanna just make an open-ended item for, for the purpose of having an open-ended item. Do you know what I mean? If there's something of substance to discuss, we don't wanna waste people's time and everything like that. We'll be happy to put it on the agenda.
Well, I was thinking that, uh, we really should do a solar, um, this project solar update, because there should be something pretty much every two weeks right now.
That's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at right now. I just think it's important that that's processes in its early stages, that, that, you know, we keep on top of it and keep as many people aware of it as, as possible.
Did you get a copy of the, of the letter from Town Council to the Building Inspector?
I have not. Uh, we spoke to Rick LaFawn earlier tonight about that, and I know he's not doing very well, but, uh, we were looking to see if that was a public document that we could have access to.
It is. I haven't seen it. I'd like a copy, but...
I haven't seen it either.
It's in the package.
It was in our package.
Was it?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah, we have not, but we did request that.
It's, uh, four pages. It's pretty, uh, inclusive.
We can certainly provide copies.
Thank you.
But why don't you get one before you leave?
Thank you.
Doesn't say anything about confidentiality on it, does it, tech, nothing on it?
No, no. No, it's... It's just a description of what the Town Council felt could be applied in this situation.
And that's, I think, what a lot of people look for clarity on. They know there's a cease and desist, but what, what exactly does that mean to them, and what, what's the, the wordage of that, and how is that process gonna start that way?
Why don't we get you a copy after the meeting, James, and you guys can take it with you and disseminate it, whatever you want.
You can give me a copy, too, because I didn't get one.
Yeah, you haven't got one in your package?
Scan it into a computer, and you can send it out to all the people in your group that are interested in this, so. How's that? Good deal? Excellent.
Well, once again, though, sincerely, thank you very much for, for what you've done.
You're welcome.
It's, it's well received.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from any of our citizens, other than Mr. Ed James? Because we're gonna name one, uh, streets, one-way streets after him. Brings, uh, brings his bride a coffee and doesn't bother the rest of us. Should've called the head and asked if we wanted something from Duncan's head.
I knew he was good-looking, Ed.
I'll have to agree on that. Anything else from the citizens, please? We're here for you. All right, thank you. The town administrator notes, unfortunately, Rick was not feeling, uh, all that great tonight, uh, so we told him to take a timeout, and, um, that's what he's doing. So he'll be back on his feet, I'm, I'm sure shortly. Probably the part of, probably the bug that's going around. A lot of people have been coming down with something, so. Moving on, selectmen notes. Do we have any volunteers to go first, or...
I will.
Thank you, Ellen.
Um, you know, James was thanking, um, us for what we did for this, um, solar issue, but I just wanna thank James and the whole Great Meadow Purchase Street, Ed, Eric, and the whole team, because this is what we need to do as residents, is, is to really expose what's going on, and, um, I don't think, I don't think this would've happened if you guys didn't all be in together, so. I, I thank you for your time. I know how much time you have all been spending, all the way back to working on the solar bylaw, so I just wanna thank you. And, um, I just wanna remind people that this Saturday, the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts are having the flag retirement ceremony at Shurtlift Park. And all of the residents and anyone is invited to attend, so I hope everybody will attend to give them support.
That's at nine a.m., no?
I think it is at nine a.m. It's nine a.m. at Shurtlift Park. So they've done a lot of work in preparing, so it'd be great if we could all be there to support them. So, and have a great few weeks.
Okay. I wanted to, to thank, I guess, the neighbors in that area on the solar, because there are three people, three houses that are mostly affected, and I think that the neighbors have risen up to help those three people, and that's, that's what I admire that you've done. You've gone to bat for somebody who needed help, and that was good. I also wanna read a bulletin that came from the police chief. It's called Got Drugs. Turn in your used or expired medication for state disposal Saturday, April thirtieth. Turn in your unwanted, expired, or unused med, medications. How can that, yep. When? Saturday, April twenty-seventh. That's Election Day, from ten a.m. to two p.m. So on your way to, to vote, you can drop off any, uh, medications that you wanted to get rid of. Where? Carver Police Station.
We, we might need those drugs after the election.
We might need those medications.
One twelve Main Street, Carver, okay? Hypodermic needles and products containing mercury will not be accepted. Okay? I'm done.
You walked into that, Dick.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mike. I'm all set.
Okay, Jack?
Speaking of the, um, April twenty-seventh election, there's also one on April thirtieth, and if you're not able to vote, um, just give me your advance warning. I know Jeanie's here. I didn't know if she wanted to get up and tell about the absentee ballots. That people might be, if they can't make the election on that day, maybe she can tell them what the process is.
And, and Jean, if you could tell us if there's a cutoff day, uh, for the town election, the town election being April twenty-seventh, is there a cutoff day to vote absentee for that as well?
It's the day before till noon time.
Okay.
So it'd be twelve, it would be twelve o'clock, uh, April twenty-fifth. It'd be the last day that you could vote for the annual town election.
So that would be Friday...
Twenty-six, sorry, the twenty-sixth of the day.
And they can come down here and vote?
Yeah, absentee ballots are now available. We have the annual town election absentee ballots are in, and so is the state primary ballots are here. So there's three reasons, so that you can, you know, you can only vote absentee if you're going out of town, or you're disabled, some reasons, not just because you wanna mow your lawn and things like that, so. But it's all available right now, so...
We're gonna check to make sure that it's not because of that.
We have people that do that. Write around and check.
So, Jean, somebody that's out of town right now, they could write or call and request a ballot?
They can write, they can call, they can go on the, um, state website...
Okay.
And rent out a application and send it to the town clerk's office.
Excellent, excellent.
They can fax them or whatever.
Mr. Balbin, uh, you have something to add to that?
Well, I wanted to make a comment about what Dick said about the drugs.
Why don't we finish the elections, and then you can follow...
Any other questions?
By the board? Any other questions, comments?
No, I just saw you up in the audience, and I figured you could answer that question.
Are those tears coming down your cheek?
Pardon me?
Are those tears down your cheek? Of happiness?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
I just want you to know, and I'll, I'll state it on TV, that I am retiring May tenth, um, and I've enjoyed my job. I absolutely love it, but, um, I'm getting up there, and it's time now to enjoy my family and grandchildren, so...
Well, thank you for the fine job you've done.
We'll be around.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
And if I could, Mike, after the ceremonies for the flags, uh, I don't know how long it's gonna last, uh, the board's been invited to a graduation ceremony of the Carver Fire Department Recruit Class of two thousand thirteen at one o'clock, the Central Fire Station. Just wanted to make sure all the board members were aware of it.
What date is that, Jack, again?
It's on Saturday, the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Right after the ceremony for the, um...
Flag.
The scouts.
Okay. All right, Robert.
Just with Dick about the drugs, um, it's really important that people do dispose of their drugs this way. It's safer. Putting it in your septic system, letting it go in there, it goes into the groundwater. And a lot of drugs, as they, I'm sure Sarah knows, of this, that they actually do damage to our wildlife. They do damage to our water. Uh, and this is the best way to dispose of them, because it's done safely. Uh, it also gets it out of the hands of drug addicts. If you have, um, drugs in your home, someone wants to break in, they're gonna steal them. All right, so you gotta protect your family. You gotta protect your groundwater, and, um, it, it's, it's a jokey matter to an extent here, but it's a very serious matter to people in the public. It's a health concern, and the police department need kudos for running this program. Thank you.
You're absolutely right. Thank you. Okay, um, last but not least, I guess, I just wanna, uh, thank everybody for their participation. Again, I can't reiterate, this is your government. We appreciate you coming out. Keep us focused, um, keep us representing you and your interests. And I just wanna say, um, you know, God bless to all of you, the town of Carver, and God bless America. Thank you. And we're gonna be moving into executive session for a couple of minutes. And that would be to acceptance of some past minutes and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non- use and, non-union personnel, the town accountant. Thank you very much. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And there's roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
Aye.
And we have four zero one.
No, that's an abstention.
Abstention.
So it's four zero zero. I'm recusing.
Okay. Four zero zero, Elaine. It's a recusal instead of an abstention.